Right, thank you councillors, we'll return to the agenda. Are there any apologies? I'll move that the, item two, that the agenda as it stands be confirmed. Councillor Stones, Councillor Vandervass, those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no, that's agreed. And draw to everyone's attention, item three, they need to declare an interest if one exists in any of the matters on the agenda, which takes us to item four. Ms Johnston, you're on your own today. Anna is going to talk to item four, which is her report on an update in respect of the second generation plan. The floor is yours.
Quite a short report. Essentially, we are just giving a report that covers the progress that we've made, and particularly the consultation that we've undertaken since the last report to this committee. And also advising that our estimate for notification has moved from the end of this year to early next year. We're still intending to get a draft document done this year, but we'd like to extend the time that we have to work through the final details of that document. As we've gone along, we've realised that all the consultation stages have taken us a lot longer than you initially anticipate. As you know, with the hazards consultation, we've just extended that out another four weeks. We had planned a six-week programme around that, so for all the phases, we've ended up extending the consultation and also adding in a lot more consultation as a result that the programme has moved out. But it's still progressing well, in my view.
Thank you. Well, can I start off the questions, just in respect of the timing? I can understand, and I guess we'd all, I hope we'd all commend your wish to be as thorough and well researched and well discussed as possible. Are there any other implications of that slippage to, well, slippage is the wrong word, that change of timing into the new year in terms of notification? Any negatives that you want to draw to people's attention?
I mean, I guess there are some, there are people in the community that are, would have liked to have had this done yesterday, or many yesterdays ago. But likewise, through the hazards consultation phase that we've just gone through, we've had a number of people saying, you know, being concerned that we're moving too quickly. And I think really all you can say is that for some people, you'll be going too slowly, and for others, you'll be going too quickly. And we take on board all those factors and try to make the best recommendation at the speed that we move. And really, it's in everyone's best interest for us to get it right ahead of notification and to do the consultation really thoroughly upfront, because it presents a better opportunity for the community to be involved at that stage, rather than having to deal with problems that may have been avoided prior to notification.
Thank you. Question? Councillor.
Thank you. Anna, I appreciate it, it's a complex thing that you're dealing with. In terms of the technical information on hazards, natural hazards, and the ORCs inputs to that, is, you mentioned them there in terms of, in the same breath as delays. Have they been timely with their information? You know, is there a holdup at their end?
I think their, their original estimate of when they could get the work done by, and when they could actually get the work done by, was different. So it took them longer than they thought, but I don't think, I wouldn't describe that as delays on their side. It's more, they obviously put a lot of resource to it and did it as quickly as they could. It was just a lot more work than they originally anticipated. So that's why we had to delay the hazards consultation out this year from last year. But I think, I can only commend the effort that they've put into it and how they've worked with us. I think it's been a really productive relationship, and I have no complaints.
Councillor Wilson.
So just a follow-up, thank you, Mr Chairman. Just in terms of how much more do you expect from them? Have you got all that you need now?
Well, we anticipate that we'll get quite a number of, well, they're not submissions, feedback forms in. From the consultation to date, there have been a number of concerns expressed by local communities about the exact boundaries of some of the mapped areas. I anticipate there'll be quite a bit of work on their side to go through all those comments and to investigate any of them and to make adjustments as required. We may also ourselves have a peer review done at the end of that, just to give the community confidence that it's been independently assessed and all those comments have been considered by another party. So, yeah, I think there'll be a bit of work to do, and until we get that feedback back, which now has been extended to the beginning of September, we won't really know how much work's involved.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson.
Just understanding, by, if we delay the notification, I presume by then we'll have much more confidence that this will be fit in well with the regional policy statement, which was perhaps the only advantage I could see in things later. I mean, how are you feeling about the timeframes for that?
Well, we haven't had any updates on that, on those timeframes. Of course, we're essentially running neck and neck, and, which is a good thing really, because it allows each document to speak to each other. And as long as that process of communication remains strong, I think we'll be in a good place, no matter which document comes out first. The main thing is we need to ensure we talk to each other frequently along the way. And, and we're on our way in terms of doing that. I think the next phase of when they have some draft content to show us will be quite telling in terms of how aligned we are. But certainly, the conversations so far have been going well, and there's a huge willingness to work together, which is a great sign.
And the only other question on there, noting your comment at the exact date to be set, not conflict with the LTP, this is the notification, just understanding, what is the timeframes for notification? And is there a, I appreciate there'll be a minimum requirement for being out, but is there a maximum? Because we could be consulting at the same time as the LTP, as long as we give them more time, presumably to...
There's a lot more time afforded the district plan than the LTP process. And, so I think it's not necessarily a case of avoiding the LTP phase. It's more smartly working around the start and finish time, because we, as well, two phases, we've got the submissions and the further submissions, so that takes quite a long time to confirm. Thank you.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you. My question was just about the delays too. You mentioned, and have mentioned previously, that part of that has been due to a lack of staff, and you note the workload of existing staff and pushing that back further. Where are we at in terms of staffing capacity for this work? And do you foresee any further, I don't want to say slippage now, as a result of a lack of resource, basically?
Well, we, as of, I think it was this week, we actually, for the first time, have our full complement of staff this year. We were just waiting on the last position to start, which was the graduate planner. You know, when you have vacancies, they affect your work programme, and they did affect the work programme, because they do take a long time to fill and to get people up and going. We now have everyone in place, so everyone seems pretty happy. Nobody has, seems to indicate any plans to go anywhere, so fingers crossed it stays like this, right through to notification, and then we'll be in a good place.
Also, it'll be spring. Councillor McTavish.
Thank you, Anna. Two questions. The first is in relation to the strategic framework that we have as a council and the gaps that have been filled in it. So, the Arts and Cockshaw strategy, which is soon to go out to consultation and will come back in probably before the end of the year. Is there any, are there any plans in place to review provisions in the district plan to ensure alignment with those strategies as they are adopted? Or, for example, the energy plan, which is currently under development? Or the food resource, which we'll be doing in three months, between September and the end of the year? All of these people or processes may come up with outcomes which could in some way or other affect council's position on particular strategic issues, which in turn may have impacts on plan content?
Well, we hadn't planned to time the plan around those processes, but certainly, as they run, we would seek feedback from the departments that are involved in those strategies. So there's quite a bit of internal consultation happening anyways. For the ones that I, that we haven't seen at all, it's hard, it's hard to know what would happen, but I do know just from early conversations on the environment strategy, there's a lot of reference to the spatial plan. So there's already an inherent connection between them, because a lot of the documents have referred to the spatial plan to which the district plan's being developed in response to. That's not to say there couldn't be some other issue that comes through the consultation process that, that wasn't around council's thinking today. Depending on the timing of that, we could, you know, integrate things. But I'm not anticipating a lot of things that wouldn't already have been discussed previously.
So you're confident that there are processes in place that will allow that chicken balance to happen?
Oh, absolutely. I think, well, I mean, we're a relatively small council, we're actively talking to each other all the time in terms of these, the departments that are involved in those strategic processes and, and our team. So we would expect those conversations to be ongoing and, and responsive.
But there is no formal process that will ensure that those things are done?
No.
I think we have a process already in place, which is a senior staff advisory group, so people responsible for those key strategies, to make sure that there's an ongoing dialogue with Anna and her, Anna and her team. So even though we've still got a couple of strategic gaps, the general principles that are going to feed into those, those strategies are kind of developed now, so I think we do have a system and a process in place really.
Councillor Noonan.
Mindful to comment, but are you happy if I moved the recommendations there on the first page to note it? And then if I could just make a comment? So I'll move.
Sure, thank you. I'll second.
I understand about the reasons why the programme's been revised, and the fact that more, more of that community have taken the advantage to engage with staff, I think is a damn good thing. And my main comment really is that I've had the opportunity to attend several of the natural hazards meetings out in the community, they've been well attended, and staff have, in my view, have performed abramally. And the collaboration that exists between this council and the ORC is very heartening. I've been around for a while, and it's certainly by far the best, the best ever. So on top of that as well, I've had conversations with people who have said they've been in contact with staff directly on all sorts of matters relating to the district plan, not just natural hazards. And for the staff to be able to provide that service additionally on top of this consultation, I think is a, is a damn good effort, so, thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to comment, for being known, that's very important. Give me a call.
I'd just, just like to follow up on Councillor Noonan's comments. You know, the DCC and the ORC have different responsibilities with regard to hazards and with regard to hazard areas, but it is the same group of ratepayers, and it's the same set of property that is being affected. So it's obviously preferable that our efforts are aligned and coordinated. And as Councillor Noonan has said, that has been the case. And I just want to flag that we have had, we've heard back from various levels of the ORC, that that effort will continue, and that the alignment and the coordination and the collaboration to make sure that we're absolutely in lockstep on this for our ratepayers will continue.
Thank you. I'll put up those in place, please say aye.
Aye.
Against no. That's agreed. That takes us through item five. And we have, we have Rob Crosby, who you're planning to bring Mr Togby up to the table, I hope. I'm with Steve, consultant Rebecca, who is the prime author of the, of the report and discussion today, so I'll... Maria, are you going to begin? Who's first?
I'll start. Yeah, I think this report just...
The floor is yours.
This report just updates council on work that we've been doing over the last year or so. It's public, a report that we've had done, looking at what protection options are available to us in, for the sort of harbour side in Southcote in regards to sea level rise.
And councillors have all received the full copy of the original report by now, long since? That's great. Rob, do you want to make some comment about the report and methodology brief? Thank you, by the way, before we do that, for your participation in the media briefing the other day, I think that was reconstructive. And it's remiss of me not to thank the ODT for the way they carried that material, I think that was helpful, because this is about information for people. And so thank you for the way you presented this work too. So would you like to make a few brief comments, and then we can field questions from council? That's right.
Certainly, as I've said before, it's always been my concern that this could become a highly emotive issue, a public issue, and so I agree with your sentiment that ODT handled it very well. The approach to this report was really to look at various options to defend Southcote against sea level rise, acknowledging that the main issue is, for a long time in the future, is not the sea itself inundating Southcote, but simply the sea putting the aquifer up. And one of the big recommendations out of this is that we don't really understand exactly how that aquifer works, but we know there's a near constant relationship between sea level and aquifer and groundwater level. So it's currently about 400 millimetres above sea level, and in many places in Southcote it's not that far below ground level. So as sea level rises, as the report says, we can expect groundwater to go up in front of it, and ultimately, we'll find that we'll become areas where there's ponding developing and the, quite confined, mostly in the Tainui area, a couple of other areas around Southcote. And there's a reasonably simple fix for that, but as sea level progresses beyond that to the point three metre level, it'll become even more difficult to deal with those ponding issues simply by, by subsurface drainage. And the trick at the moment is, the assumption at the moment is that we can actually trick the aquifer in thinking that its boundary conditions haven't changed, that sea level hasn't risen, it's where it always used to be. So to do that, we need to depress the groundwater level around the perimeter of Southcote, and that's really where we got to in terms of suggesting that there would be a network of wells around the perimeter of Southcote, certainly on the south and the east side of it, basically to keep the groundwater level down sufficiently there and to intercept inflowing subsurface seawater and maintain the aquifer where it is. The report actually says it's not going to address some of the flooding issues that currently exist in Southcote, that's another issue altogether. And so, so leading on from that sort of solution, and we looked at a number, the, you know, I've done some costing, which is in the report as well, but I think the, the big message in the report is we can defend Southcote for quite a long time, and a direct inundation is, is some way into the future. There is some minor issues around, with flooding around the perimeter of the harbour at the moment, which, or as it stands at the moment, which are going to be very difficult to address, and I'm talking about the Marn Street, the Summerbrook Street area in particular, there's a little bit around Playfield Park and into the harbour side area. We need to better understand the aquifer, the way it functions, and also the subsurface conditions, how permeable the groundwater is underneath there, and the other, sorry, how permeable ground is. And the other, I think, issue is that there is time to deal with this. It's not something, and this is what I was particularly concerned about when it got out to the public arena, that it was, the message needs to be that we're not going to inundate it next year, or five years, or 10 years out from now, and we will start to gradually see the symptoms, and we'll have time to react.
Thank you very much. Well, the floor is open for questions. Councillor Vandervass.
Take it from your report that you assume the IPCC predictions as being the basis on which you look forward?
No, the report actually, the question put to us was, what can we do to defend Southcote against these sea level rise scenarios, which are council policy, and that's the reports written around the current levels that have been adopted by council's policy. IPCC is currently published in quite a wide range, by the end of the century, so, yeah, those policies fit just inside that range.
Right. On page 5.18 of our bit of paper, it talks about the rainfall predictions locally as being well outside the lower limit of IPCC predictions. There has also been a lot of comment in the media and on blogs recently, that the increase in temperature claimed over the last 17 years by the IPCC simply hasn't happened. Given that there is some variance, if you like, from the IPC predictions, and that the IPC predictions themselves have a wide variance, has your report basically looked at the lower level of, of predictions or the higher level of predictions of the IPCC?
The brief that we gave to Rob was purely based on the DCC's climate change policy, predictions policy, and we hope that we will be able to update that on the latest IPCC information and central government's response to that information, hopefully later this year. But, you know, we, we haven't got into the ins and outs of the science, the climate science, we are following the central government line on it.
Yeah, thank you for making that, that's twice that's been made quite clear. So we're not going to go down the path, councillor, of your disbelief in those figures. The council policy is quite clear. If you wish to debate that, you need to do that at a council meeting, not here.
I'm not debating that, and I don't have a disbelief, as you have just suggested.
Whatever you're debating, if you have another question, we'll come back to it later.
Well, no, no, the question that I had was relating to the local rainfall predictions being well outside the IPCC limits here, and whether that in any way coloured the basic assumptions that we were working on.
Not as far as we're concerned in that area in our report.
All right. To put it simply then, final question through the chair, we're in a situation where you believe over the next five or 10 years that any inundation issues or any rising in the level of groundwater can essentially be pumped away?
I don't actually think in the next five or 10 years that it's going to become an issue. It's going to be beyond that before we actually see any physical manifestation of surface, brown surface of the impact of sea level rise.
And at that stage, given...
Hang on, that was your final question, you said that, now you're asking another one.
This is part of the same question.
Oh, really? It's a part of the same final question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Given that it's not the next five to 10 years, but beyond that, are you then in a situation to say now, because of the permeability of the ground, that we will be in a position to simply be able to pump any excess water away at that stage? Or are you talking about new dikes?
No, I'm talking about, we need to do quite a lot of subsurface investigation before we can sort of put that particular issue to bed, as quite a lot of investigation required, and that's one of the recommendations in the report.
Thank you.
Councillor Calvert.
Thank you for this, I found it really helpful. It's, I know that's our question, but, the, I'm just wondering whether it's likely to be any use to us to listen to people who have had any groundwater and other issues in Dunedin. I know that probably every two or three days, somebody comes up to me and says, oh, about that groundwater stuff, we work out that such and such, and there are often treaties and things. We know that when there's a high tide, this happens, it will probably race course or something. There's a lot of people out there who have knowledge of things that have happened, and I just wonder whether there are any use, or whether it's, if they are useful, would it be useful for us to put something out there and say, anyone who's got any knowledge, who's been working in Dunedin for the last 30 years and anywhere near the ground and can help us, would it be useful for them to send things in? Should we sort of ask out there, just to add to our understanding, or?
Yeah, I think local knowledge is always useful, and I think that's why I'm hopeful that we start some real community conversations on this issue, so that we can have as informed discussions as possible. So yes.
The other element in relation to that is that, I'm not sure if it's carried by the ODT, but we are planning to have a couple of, or at least a double session public meeting from Fawbry or some, some such, to invite, to inform people about this material and the ongoing discussion, and to pick up some of that feedback. So that's already in hand, or some of that's already in hand. Councillor Thompson.
I've got two questions. The, the technological approach that you're suggesting to manage, is that something, is that an approach that's being used at the moment elsewhere? Do we have a, are we able to take some comfort from this being used to manage some of the kinds of problems anywhere?
Well, the technology's actually not really different to normal water supplies, in that you, you pump and you develop a depression in the groundwater surface. You have enough of those wells close enough together, rather than having a long bowl that comes back to the original groundwater surface, you get a bowl that comes up and then dips down and up and dips down. So what you're aiming to do is just lower the, lower the highest point of groundwater, but the technology for extracting water up to ground is, as I've, on which these costings are based, is pretty much normal.
Yeah, it was more the former that I was, that I was, rather than the ability to drill, drill holes, so to speak. But so, that the, the, the use of the holes to manage the aquifer level is, is, that's a relatively standard...
Pretty standard deep watering process, if you're trying to deep water a large area.
And, and related to that, I guess one of the issues for, for council is around when do they need to do things, assuming, you know, certain scenarios, what kind of lead times might be required? Because I guess nobody wants to spend money earlier than they need to, but nobody wants to be accused of having done it too late. So do you have a sense of, of the, the timeframes that one would need to respond?
I've already, I've already said it in the earlier briefing, so I'll have to say the same thing again, and I believe that we, we, if you take the Tainui example, which is the lowest point in the city, and, so what's going to happen is that over a period of time, you'll start to get more frequent groundwater events there for sea level rise. So, but they won't, they will come, let's, for argument's sake, say there's a, they're every, once every two years, and they're tolerable at the moment, they might, you know, in 20 years' time, they might come once every six months, and, and you'll, you'll be able to track that trend, and, and you'll be able to say at that point, well, you know, we really need to do something about it now, and you may have still something in the order of five years before you really need to do something about it. So you're going to get a kind of warning, because the symptoms are going to become more frequent.
Thank you. Councillor Peet.
Mr Chairman, a quick question about groundwater monitoring, and just wondered how many bores are operating there now, and whether that's enough, in your opinion, to keep a good check on, on as we go through the next few decades?
Well, there are four out there at the moment. ORC put in three about five or six years ago, in the early stages of the three water strategy, as I recall, and then we've got one more put in more recently. The answer is that not enough. That really only tells us a little bit about some of the quite isolated areas in Southcote, and none of them are really in the areas that we're most interested, which are out of the area.
We have had some temporary wells put in as well. Two years ago, we had a master student at Torgo doing a network of like 15 or so temporary bores. So we've got, we've got little bits of information, the ORC honour, promise to put in another for us, and there's a report going to, to their council, I think it's today or yesterday, talking about how they're going to monitor the aquifer going forward, and what investigation might be planned to do.
Okay. Just to clarify that, the lighter work, the bores are comparatively shallow in relation to, compared with the ORC bores. Tell us a lot about the near surface conditions, but they don't really tell us a lot about the deeper conditions, which is really where we want to get to. So there is information, but it's sketchy and hard to call off.
Councillor Ford.
Excuse me. And while I, I was, I joined the board, I thought it was quite, quite good.
I joined the board, I thought it was quite good. One of the questions I had though was in relation to that areas like Tainui, so it's really low. Is that below sea level in South Dunedin or is that...
It's very... it's marginally above sea level, but only marginally above. So, if you, for example, have a look at figure five, I'm sorry, about figure... figure one, that's probably the right one. Yes. So, if you look at figure one, based on the nineteen ninety sea level, which is about a hundred odd, fifty odd kilometres below where it is now, you can see that that's how... that figure tells you how far below mean high water spring. So, that's a metre above round there, that's a metre above mean sea level. So, typically, the deepest area there is point four to point six metres below mean high water spring, which taken off a metre is somewhere between point six and point four metres above sea level. So, if only just.
So, at this stage, the water is mainly from...
Well, the oars that have been installed by ORC basically start over in Kennedy Street, which is now near Fawbury Park, and it was one at Fawbury Park and one in Tomahoe, and in between the two of them. And the water there is typically about point six metres below groundwater level.
Roughly point four metres above sea level.
But there is.
And maybe it's...
The Kennedy Street ore actually does show a slight response to sea level, to tidal changes. So, it does wander up and down with a tidal range might be plus or minus a metre of high water spring. At Kennedy Street, from memory, it's something like maybe varies about point two or something.
Just putting this in mind, but the next question would be, can you really tell me that you don't need to pay any... you know, I've taken that message quite often with him, and I guess the council will definitely be a bit too late, but do you have a... a correct attribute based on the council level? That's what I've been saying since...
Fifty dollars since nineteen fifty eight. That nineteen fifty eight is chart is basically the chart data that the IPCC uses for a survey. It's fifty dollars since nineteen fifty eight. So, this is forty two, sixty odd years ago.
So, do you think we... do we need to...
Well, no, the trigger point is we can start seeing unacceptable or unacceptably frequent flooding and a lot of that there isn't there. And so, if you put a date on that, what the...
Thank you. Councillor Z.
My question relates to funding and the costs here, and I noticed there are some costs, indicative costs listed there. Are the local authorities required to carry those costs? Is there, like, the National Infrastructure Unit and the Ministry of the Environment? Is there potential for local authorities to have some redress with regards to funding to those sort of organisations?
I think that's a bit of a sort of grey hole at the moment, and we're quite pleased because the Parliamentary Commission for the Environment has opened an investigation into climate change adaptation in New Zealand. So, we're hoping that some of those questions about where responsibility lies for different aspects of the climate change adaptation work may be answered, but at the moment, we don't have a clear steer on that.
This has the potential, in fact, it comes to pass, to be an absolute disaster for the city of the nature of, say, an urgent grade in Christchurch. Can one expect some national assistance? Is that being redressed in any way at all?
There are bits and pieces happening. So, the National Infrastructure Unit is now looking at the resilience of like core infrastructure, so roads and water and waste and energy networks, but there hasn't been a huge amount of guidance from the central government level on general costs associated with climate change impacts.
Yeah, so I think country's not...
And would seem to me, councillor, that one of the main reasons for this work and work that is followed from it or not, depending on this committee and council, is to make sure it's not absolutely, or even a little disaster for the city, actually. Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. Through the chairs, it's pleasing that someone's listening to the Parliamentary Commissioner for the Environment, even if Parliament isn't necessarily. Mr Crosby, thanks for the report, and I think it's really helpful that it's focused on levels of sea level rise rather than timeframe, which are far more speculative, as problematic as that is for our own infrastructure planning. Inundation of coastal communities obviously is a very real and very widespread problem internationally, but that, as outlined in this report, is an extreme outlier for the South City and Harb side area. We're dealing far more with groundwater issues and the correlation between that and sea level rise. I just wonder how widespread internationally is that as a problem? And I guess my real question is, what is the pool of engineering expertise globally that's dealing with this? And if... and... no, these are two separate questions. I'll ask that as the first question.
Well, it will depend on the policy of any particular areas, area as to whether it's a groundwater issue or an inundation issue. It just so happens in South Dunedin for the time being, it's a groundwater issue. But I can imagine, for example, Christchurch, eastern side of Christchurch, will be experiencing a very similar issue in the near term. That groundwater level will rise there. Almost any of our coastal communities that have high groundwater levels, and quite a lot of them do, will, in the first instance, just see... the first symptoms will be the groundwater, if it doesn't drain away or it is starting to come up out of the ground. Other places in the world, it is a direct inundation issue because they're just that low and that's all there is to it.
Yeah. Yep. Are you aware of any work that's going on in a development stage, potential solutions for these kinds of problems that the report has outlined? And I guess in looking at longer term, capital and operational costs whereby the longer we can delay this from becoming an issue, the more effective and cost effective potentially the solutions might be. By pushing mitigation more, can we alleviate the burden of our adaptation further down?
I mean, the mitigation issue redires around emissions, and that's, you know, there's various views about that. The issue with sea level low is it's got a huge amount of inertia when the mitigation complete tomorrow, not slowing down sea level rise. It seems it's got a huge amount of inertia and that kind of goes on going. So, I mean, it really seems to be a priority to the problem strategy of mitigation on one side, but the reality is that there's so much inertia in the system, the global system, that we still need to be paying for sea level rise because we just won't be able to turn it off tomorrow.
Thank you. Councillor Teish.
I have a policy in the manager here, a comment there.
I was just checking, like, basically in the IPCC work, even with the zero change door, like, even with zero comment tomorrow, there's still sea level rise. So, I think linking mitigation now with adaptation on this issue is maybe not helpful.
Two questions through the chair. The first comes to the technical work, next steps descriptions on page five point six. And I note that it's planned to further belt of the details needed to establish a robust cost benefit analysis and exploring the available non-technology options, and I'm supportive of both of those. But a historical need is seeking to identify the best way to deal with this issue. For me, some of the biggest issues are around the timeframes associated with the life of open infrastructure and investment that's going to start to leave at this time. And I wonder whether there is any, perhaps any analysis or is intended to be any analysis around that? For example, if we are putting down pipes now, which are going to have a life of a hundred years, then that is... we need to make decisions sooner than we might if we were simply monitoring oars and making a last minute decision around putting in pumps when we see sea levels rising. So, are we making... is there an intention to do any analysis of the life expectancy of infrastructure or investment going now?
I think that's what we're sort of hoping to get out of the, doing this cost benefit analysis work, and we've started that work and there's been... we just haven't got as far as we had hoped at this point in time. So, there's been challenges around really quantifying social and environmental impacts in a cost benefit analysis. And particularly somewhere like the Harbour side of South City area, where we've got a lot of people living there, we really want to get some good numbers around the social side of things. So, but I do hope that we get to the stage where we can give you some advice as to timing of things, whether something's a sensible investment decision looking in the long term. But at the moment, we don't have that, and that's, I think, why we're not asking any decisions to be made on the work that Rob's done at this point, because we think there's still more work and information to be gathered before we put that to you.
But is it intended that that work will be done as part of this ongoing KTM work?
Yeah, I think it has to be.
And my second question is in relation to the... that's the tax number three, sorry, which refers to the national climate change work the council's involved with. The discussions of the MFE's updated guidance manuals, which I'm sure we all would be towards, given that they have failed to update since two thousand and eight. There's a reference between the MFE's, the section on the MFE and the climate change impact identification specific program. Is that work that is done as part of the CCII project, is that MFE commissioned work? Or is that simply a piece of work, that multi-university research program, is that being done independent of MFE? Like, because I think there's a distinction between MFE issuing guidance and the CCII program issuing guidance if it's separate.
The CCII funding is not MFE funding, but it is central government funded, and MFE have indicated to us that they are waiting on that work before they would look at updating their guidance.
Okay. Yeah, so it's all linked. Okay.
Thank you. That's the third of your two questions.
Well, I would like to ask one technical question of the...
Thank you.
The table, and that is in relation to the defense options that you considered, and the... one of the defense options that you considered was looking at the ordering wells throughout the area, but you mentioned this elimination that might occur through that. Is there a risk if perimeter wells are put in of them at some point getting breached and by an event or something? And then that not being able to be recovered? Would it be easier for us to put in wells in the middle to provide resilience in the potential event of a breach? Or is that not really a technical possibility? I'm not much sure.
It's certainly a technical possibility, but I put it like is that even the minimum scenario be where you've got wells around the perimeter of South Dunedin, there is quite a number of wells, they're not just one or two. So, in the normal course of events, you can expect a pump to fail. But because there are a significant number of them, you may have a very localised issue for a very short period of time if you replace a pump. So, I don't see the need to put a backup system if you're like that under South Dunedin.
Councillor Wilson.
I think I've got one question, but that may change. Robert, thank you. I just wanted to please out that I may have misheard you. So, I just want to go back, and you said something about once you see that this ponding is after Dunedin and seeing the needs to be, that there's plenty of time to do that. And I think, is that...
Correct.
Then, and I'm just wondering if the report has been written about infrastructure that we own or infrastructure that private people, and I think this is a topic that councillor McTavish was sort of talking about, because I would imagine some wooden piles, for example, wouldn't suffer that sort of treatment too long and possibly are already in water and of houses. And I'm just wondering, I just don't get a feel that we can wait that long and that there's time to mitigate at that point? The underground infrastructure will be already eroding, or is that something I should worry about?
I think you could say that most house piles in South Dunedin are all really well truly in water. For significant periods of time, all the time. So, I don't see that particularly as an issue. You know, the property owned infrastructure of that sort of nature is being subject to whatever conditions it will experience in the future now, because groundwater's being high in South Dunedin and always.
Yeah.
I would say we've been really careful not to say that what's been looked at by Rob is anything to do with dealing with existing issues in that area, and there are existing issues. You know, we have the MP for that area talking to us quite often now about the mold under a lot of the housing. You know, that's not what this work has been about, and we're not going to resolve it because it's work.
I suppose my problem is that it almost looks like we can resolve by delaying decisions, but in fact, there are some other issues right now that this will not deal with at all.
Yes, we've, as I said at the outset, we've not... this won't change any of the other issues that are currently to the fore in South Dunedin. They will maybe hold them as they are now, but we won't change this point of view.
And this was my final question. So, taking it further, if we did anything now, if we thought actually we enhanced that community by actually doing some of this mitigation work now to reduce their short term losses, it is worth... is there any benefit in doing some of that work now, which will also have benefits in the future?
Huge cost because you have to do it all over South Dunedin, which effectively what you're saying is you would implement scenario D now, which would be in that sort of category.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Z.
I just wish to clarify a comment I made before. You, I think, Mr Chairman, has understood it, and others may as well. When I referred to a disaster, I didn't mean it was a disaster with regards to the effects of sea level rise. I understand the incremental nature of the problem, but the disaster I was referring to was the fact that we could possibly have to fund it. There's a big difference.
Thank you for the clarification, Councillor. Most helpful. Councillor Paul.
I'm sure it's a question or a statement, but I put, "Do you agree?" just on the back of it for Rob anyway, just to cover it off. But mine was in relation to Councillor Z at the time, and what I was going to make a comment was, and I live below sea level and pay big drainage bills every year, but the question I have is that the value of any work as outlined in the report relative to the value of the infrastructure of the South Dunedin area, it would seem a very low... would you agree that it's a fairly low percentage that would be required over capital value if we were to rate those properties?
Well, on the strength of the numbers that need to provide respectively, the value of the building and structure in South Dunedin is definitely quite low in capital, according to capital cost.
I'm sure the most residents of the city, including its rural outliers, would be most happy to fund this work, councillor. Councillor Paul.
Thank you, Chair. Maria, has any consultation been taken place with the real estate community?
As yet, no. No, we haven't gone out and consulted in any way.
In one regard, as a... for property owners in this area, what would we be doing for them or sharing this information with them? The ODT did a good job last week in doing that, but, you know, the concern I have is that, you know, a non-urgent loan is two hundred and sixty dollars, or urgent loan is three hundred and ten dollars, and people buy houses to get a little report. Will we be displaying all this information openly to all the real estate agents and really ensuring that costs aren't related to people purchasing houses in this area?
The report is public on our website, and with regard to the limbs, we've just put a line on any property that's in that study area to say that the report exists, and that's what we do with all our hazard information.
Okay. And finally, will we be monitoring property values in regards to this area or other areas of town in regards to where there've been similar property values, say a house in Campbell Street versus a house in Green Island or something like that?
I don't know that we would necessarily be monitoring the property values or setting up a programme to monitor them, but I think that's something that other organisations in the town do already, and I guess we would be looking at that information.
Thank you. Doesn't appear to be any more questions, so let's go to the recommendations, please, on page five one, can I have someone moving secondly? Councillor Lord, second, and councillor Holden. Any discussion? Councillor Van de Beek.
Having enough of recommendations one and three.
Sorry, just before we do, councillor Lord, do you want to speak as mover? Thank you, councillor Van de Beek.
But in the middle of recommendation number two, it talks about progress programme and required resourcing for more detailed investigative work. Given that Mr Crosby's report has already cost us, I think, something like $38,000, I'm not sure if that's correct, but I think that's what I've been told. And given that we are talking about an incremental issue here that has taken more than 50 years at a millimetre a year, and given that Mr Crosby has confirmed that the trigger point is actually going to be flooding in South Dunedin, and that when we have flooding in South Dunedin, we are still there in a position, because that flooding will be at a king tide or whatever, to actually do something about it, you know, get some Dutch engineers in. Then I would not be that happy about actually spending more work on it, more money on further investigation at this stage. And I know that consultants are always very keen to get as much detailed work as possible if there may be some value in it. I'm very keen to try and get balance where we do the work that is needed, when it's needed. And if Mr Crosby, and I think his rationale is pretty transparent, if Mr Crosby is right and we're looking at probably at least 10 years before we've actually got any inundation trigger point to look at, why would we want to be doing a lot more work now? I'm quite happy for the existing monitoring to go on and quite happy under recommendation three for information to be shared with the O R C. The O R C have got some very good Li D A information on levels of things. But I really don't think at this stage that recommendation number two suggesting putting more resource into more detailed research is something that is going to give us value.
And while I don't think it does that, what it does is talk about providing us an opportunity in due course to talk about what level of resourcing we might want to come out of or not. So I'm quite happy to separate them when it comes time to put them of that immediate ease. Councillor Thompson. If further discussion, councillor P.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I highlighted those words in recommendation two as well, but I'm prepared to support them at this point, given what Mr Crosby has been telling us now about the monitoring work that's going on and could go on. And I would like to see the councillor and his staff actually talk to the O R C about collaborative work in terms of the more investigation. And Mr Crosby's talked about the sketchiness of the information we're getting from the four bores at this point, and that there's a room for more work to be done in terms of monitoring the South Dunedin aquifer. That I see as O R C's responsibility in terms of natural hazards and the threat to the risks that we, some of our communities have. But I have found overall, this is reassuring, this is the first, the most constructive piece of preparedness, planning and preparedness document that I have seen in terms of sea level rise and what we're facing, even though it's a millimetre a year at this point, it seems in the last 50 years, it is coming. And to have a reassurance in the conclusion that South Dunedin can be defended, it will come at a cost, but it can be defended, I think it's very important. So I'm happy to support this recommendation, see the recommendation.
Thank you for that. Councillor, the movement want to, councillor McTavish.
Just a couple of points, if I may. Chair, I think the point of taking forward some further work at this stage is that this is just one part of each puzzle, part of which being really important community engagement, another part being consideration of other options. That's all articulated, I think, in the report. I also think it is relevant for us to reflect on the fact that this is a very costly exercise. And as a financially constrained council, it is important for us to have really long leadership, any expenditure that we may need to have here, not only us personally, but also private citizens as well. And I think that's why it is important that we proceed with this work. But the point that I really wanted to make is that I don't think it's appropriate for central government to simply say this is a local government responsibility. I don't think it is appropriate for them to hold back by issuing guidance from a national perspective around this issue. And I think we need to be putting pressure on central government to be better supporting its regions and its cities to work on this, which is an issue of national importance. It is an issue which is, I think, cross-party, it is cross-generation, it is a long-term issue of, I think councillor Z highlighted, it's significant economic importance, significant social importance for this country. And so far to date, I've seen, I think we've seen a complete absence of leadership from central government on this issue. And I think it is our responsibility to ensure that they hear that from us and hear that we, as a local government, are expecting better support for us and for our citizens on this matter. And I would be very keen to make a notification to the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Lord, do you have to run on five? Okay, with the meeting, if I've got one and three together, I'll do so. Those in favor, please say aye. Against, no. Disagreed. And number two, those in favor, please say aye. Against, no.
No, reported, please.
Thank you very much. That's great. Thank you very much, Brendan and Maria, for all your work in this area.
I'm going.
And thank you, Mr Crosby, for your report and your doubtless continued involvement. Certainly preparedness from our public meetings that I learned earlier. Thank you. Dr Hazel, and friends.
Item six, there. Everyone here is aware of the genesis of this paper in the annual plan discussions and the, and the report that council asked for, which is with us now. Can I compliment you on what I think is a very cautious approach? And given the fact that there are lots involved and interested in developments of this kind, I think that's entirely appropriate. So I've just handed it forward to you to talk about this at whatever length you choose. And then we'll field some questions before we go to the recommendations.
You see, I guess it is, in that respect, a cautious report based on the fact that I've had already a lot of feedback on the matter, and there are a number of issues that do need to be thought through well. The other thing is, I think, there are good opportunities though for some quite constructive approaches to come out of it. So I think it's important to take a little bit of time to work through what the range of options might be, but to be very clear about what it is we want to achieve from doing this as well, so that we have something that is then measurable, that we can then assess properly at the end if we do a trial, to say this is what we have, we can measure, we can say that we did succeed or it didn't succeed, or that there may be other ways of achieving the same thing. So I've been in equal parts heartened by some of the responses and concerned by some of the responses, but I think that overall people are willing to look at how we can improve the area in a broad sense.
Thank you. Do we have anything to add? Field of questions, too? Are there any? Councillor Van de Beek.
Do you think we actually have a problem here that needs addressing? And if we do have a problem, how do you think it should be financed, the solution for all the research?
Can I just before Dr Hazel and Anna said, can I just remind the councillor that this report was prepared at the request of this group who asked for reports on options? So I'm not sure whether the question is at all appropriate. I know Dr Hazel can stand up for himself, but I'd really ask you to address the report rather than some imaginary chimera.
This group certainly asked for the report. I certainly didn't. I believe that we have a lot of make-work reports being asked for around the table. And I believe that we actually have real problems that we should be focusing on and putting resources into. And I'm not convinced that this is one of them, and I asked the question again, is there a real problem here? Do we have a problem in the Lower Optican or Lower Stewart Street? And if we do have a problem, where should the money come from to fix it or to research it?
I think one of the things that I've come across so far in the work that we've done is even from people who do not support the idea of closing the Lower Optican, they've all noted ways that they think the area could be improved. And that is not just through council spending money. A number of them have said, look, we would like to be involved and we would offer to do something if we were allowed to do this. So that's what I'm quite keen to explore a lot, is where are those opportunities for partnership? Because it might not be that we come to a permanent solution that is something that's going to cost council lots of money. It might be something that by working with owners of buildings and businesses in that area, we can create a more vibrant place just by even relaxing some rules that we have, by working together with them around events. So I'm cautiously optimistic that there's a middle ground that isn't going to be a costly one for us.
So what you're suggesting is that there are some improvements available that don't really have a major cost component to it.
I believe so, yes.
Thank you. Councillor Calvert.
I notice, and thank you for this, I notice that the report talks about the central city accessibility and safety upgrade, and that happening at the same sort of time. And you've made the point, Dr Hazel, that there may be other things come out of it. I'm wondering whether the option, the recommendation could be widened at all to suggest development of options for a trial of pedestrianisation and other enhancements for the Optican or worse, that effect, and whether instead of just Lower Optican, Stewart Street, it should be broadened? Because what we're looking at here seems to be something that we're looking at separately and should probably be looked at in isolation. And I'm just wondering whether this recommendation, I mean, it's your recommendation, I wonder if our resolution that comes out of it could be broadened so that it can be looked at in and around, you know, the whole of what we do with the Optican and pedestrianisation in general as part of the central network. I mean, you've, you've sort of got quite a narrow recommendation, what would your attitude be to broadening that in those two ways?
Well, I think the wording of the recommendation may seem quite narrow. The reality is, any of the options that we were going to be putting up, we're going to be very broad in encompassing everything from a, you know, a do-nothing approach to a full-time, full pedestrianisation model and lots of other options in between of the ways you could achieve that, whether those are partial pedestrianisations or shared space or certain times. And I think we are already, as a result of the internal meetings that we've had, looking very broadly, because there are a number of knock-on effects of, you know, if you do one thing here, it often has an effect on an intersection, two or three behind it. So we're already looking at those matters. So I think while it may sound quite narrow, it is very much broad and we'd be happy, I think, as, you know, as we look at these options, to be considering, if this isn't the most appropriate location, are there more appropriate locations for it?
So that would be broad enough to allow you to do all those things, or would you prefer that? I mean, this very definitely says pedestrianisation based on Lower Optican and Lower Stewart Street. Would you prefer a slightly wider brief to a language more effectively?
I think we're happy with the brief as is, I don't think we might have thought.
I was just going to say that the focus of this report is directly in response to the annual plan request for a report with this focus, so that's why the focus is what it is. The other work that's referred to in the report, and I note that transportation planning is here as well, if you wanted directly questions to them, is going on at the same time. So by nature, that wider project is already, that has that wider scope that you refer to is already going on as well. This report is only pulled out by virtue of the annual plan process. We wouldn't have otherwise done this report, although these options would have been considered as part of that wider project anyways.
Thank you. That's going to clarify some wider context. Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, through the chair. Thanks, Dr Hazel, for the timely traction that we've generated on this issue, we shot across the bow, public perception of local government being a glacial beast. But I do wonder, with relation specifically to councillor Calvert's question, given the timeline that you've outlined here, if it were to be broadened to encompass even a broad geographic area, would it still be an achievable timeline, given those options? And if we were to broaden the recommendation, would this still be achievable by this coming summer?
We could always do with more time. But more time in this case may not necessarily, I think we need the certainty for people around the issue as well. But a number of people want to know, are we actually going to do something? And I think it would be worth sticking as much as we can to this timeline. Because I think if we don't do that, we then really need to extend it out by a whole other year to hit the following summer, so that you're also trialling it within the cruise ship period and a time when people are more likely to use the space. So I think unfortunately, it does mean if you extend it out, it goes a long way out.
I, oh, I'm sorry. Which is great, but I'm going to hazard a guess that cruise ship passengers don't participate too often in D C C consultation documents. And my question is, given, given the demographic differences in Dunedin between spring and summer, and we've got November, December 2014 as the period here outlined for consultation, is there any way that we can either, maybe not bring that forward, but at least make sure that it's at the earliest possible opportunity to capture as much of our departing younger demographic as we can, to make sure that their report is entered into this process?
Yeah, I think that is entirely possible, and that was something that I hadn't thought of, and I have struck that problem before, actually in the past, we've consulted in that November, December period and missed out on an important part of the population. So yes.
Just one more. And again, the council decision in January 2015, depending on what the option is that is chosen at that meeting, may, maybe February 2015 is a little rotation date problematic. So is there really a way that we would make sure that that consultation period was as early as possible, that that decision couldn't be made at the end of this year to allow as much time for whatever comes out of that to be put in place?
I'd need to go back and check what the dates are for the council meetings.
I think it's one more specific.
Really?
There's one late December.
If there's one late December, then that might be possible.
Thank you. Councillor Z. Councillor McTavish.
Yeah, my question was related in that I'm curious about the relationship between the recommendations and the timeframes and the second resolution that we passed to annual plan regarding the community funding opportunities, given that any trial is unfunded. If we were to have that decision in late November, it would leave you one month to pursue community fundraising, should that be required? Or is there some other way that is proposed that a trial might be funded between the decision in January and implementation in April? Or is there some other way that is proposed that a trial might be funded between the decision in January and implementation?
I suppose the report doesn't speak to the community funding resolution directly. I'd have to say we don't really have any experience or mechanisms within our team to undertake such an activity. And I have some worries that for us to upscale and to figure out how you do community fundraising and to get staff trained and to create the mechanisms to do that type of thing is actually going to cost more resource-wise than we might possibly gain. And until, I would think something like that needs to be done at a council-wide level and it needs to have input at a corporate level in terms of if council's going to go down the track of different funding mechanisms, it can't, I would not want it applied to us as the guinea pig on a project of this nature. Because I think there's a lot more work in that than it sounds in terms of figuring out how to do that. And I just don't feel comfortable that we, as a team, have the resources to be the ones that have to figure that out, how to do that. And I would rather that if council wants to go down that as an alternate funding mechanism, that that gets passed over to corporate to investigate and to look at it more broadly rather than apply to this project would be my feeling.
Well, that, I mean, clearly that's one, that's a discussion that will make it to be how, how the management people about how that resolution is processed, given that it's a standing resolution for motion to council. But that still leads to a question, which is how is it intended that this trial would be funded, given that it is not funded in this current year? And is there areas to be called consideration of further budgets?
Well, that each one of the options that will come up for will have a cost and attached to them and that will be part of the council's decision of the cost benefit of each one. If we have to try and find funding for that one within existing budgets, then, you know, there'll be other pieces of work that don't happen as a result. We'll need to present those as the options. So yes, you might be able to trial this, but it will come at a cost of something else.
Thank you councillor Law. My question is really more of a discussion for myself as well. All right, councillor Thompson.
You can consult immensely on what Christmas dinner should be like, but the best consultations generally are after evening. And I just wonder whether we've got that problem here, that in essence what we're doing is consulting about a trial and we're going to spend six months doing that. But in fact, the ability to really comment on whether it's good, bad or ugly is going to be infinitely enhanced by the trial. So I just wonder if we've got the emphasis the wrong way around.
I understand your concerns. However, I think that issue is so contentious that it is important to take the community along with you on that journey, to have those discussions and to be sure that what we come up with in terms of trials are actually entirely suitable for that area and that we haven't missed any issues that we could do if we just went and implemented something. And I think what has been of trouble is some of the reporting around what exactly we're trialling has led some people in the community to maybe overreact in terms of what they think is, you know, what they think is going to happen. And that already, you know, in some people, in a number of people's minds, and this is a consultation, the informal feedback I've had so far, is that we're closing off the Optigan 24 hours a day to solve a problem with drunk people at night, because those are the media stories that it runs. And it is difficult to undo some of that perception. So I think it's important that we get the front end of this right and that we can get support by working with people in that area. And I know it does seem like we're going through a lot of processes beforehand, but I feel more comfortable about doing that.
Just a couple more questions, just to make a comment. I think the, and I think it's fair to say, even in Dr Hazleton's presence, the development of the city centre and the warehouse precinct in a way that local partners have gone along with it and encouraged it and become involved and contributed, is really the example of what can be done with the rights of cautious attitude. I think we're very fortunate to have someone who's already brought that, this sort of project and has displayed some sort of caution here. So I think that needs to be said publicly as well.
councillor Pete. I don't have to ask. Question for Dr Hazleton, just what in your view is the optimum time for such a trial?
Well, I think it needs to stretch over a successive period because I think what, you need to trial all the different conditions. So we need to, what we don't want to do is trial it when the students aren't back only. And or, and part of reason to avoid the Christmas lead-up as well is partly, you know, partly because you won't have a certain part of the population here, you're also weather dependent. You want to trial it in a number of different conditions. And so I think it's important to look at, you know, having it over a range of time, having quite worked out exactly what that time is, but some of that would depend on exactly what the trial consists of. If it's only certain days of the week, you might stretch it over quite a long time. If it's a full closure, you might do it for a shorter period.
All right, we seem to be out of questions. I'll, will we go to the recommendation on six one? I have a moment please. Moved by the mayor, seconded by councillor Thompson and many others. Do you want to speak?
Well, I support this really, and I think that the approach of, the cautious approach that the chair referred to and Glenn has explained is a very good one. Because this isn't about solving the problem, it's about enhancing an opportunity. And it's not an opportunity for pedestrians, it's an opportunity for everyone who uses the space. So there are businesses and their employees and their patrons and motorists and people who work in offices and people who work in bars. There's a whole heap of people who have observed that there may be better ways of utilizing this space that enhances it for everybody. So I really look forward to the trial that will seek to enhance the centre of our city for the use of everyone who likes to use it or who works there.
Thank you, councillor Speaker. councillor Vanderweer.
I've asked some questions on what actually kicked this off, which is the LOF, the Lower Optigan Forum. And I haven't had demands to date, but from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, the Lower Optigan Forum is mainly a group of interested pub managers in Lower Optigan?
No, the, sorry, the earlier report from 2010, that was part of the Lower Optigan Forum. The report we're basing on now is from the annual plan and from a submission.
Right. But I'm talking about the original, I'm talking about the LOF report that's included in our papers here.
Yes, so that's from 2010.
And my understanding is that that basically was kicked off by Optigan pub managers who in effect, as I see it, want to increase their pub footprint into public space. They've already got much increased footpath areas there, which has cost us half a million dollars in one case, I remember. This just seems to be a further extension of it in terms of the original kickoff of the idea. So I'm a bit concerned that there are some businesses that are very keen on it. And from a pub manager's point of view, I can see how that would have a lot of advantages. But there are also some businesses directly affected who are very, very not keen on it. And given that we, council, that we don't have money to throw around in research or developing or trialling anything. And it worries me that so many councillors here seem to be voting for reports and for suggestions of enhancing, improving and optimizing, which I'm all for if we can afford it. But I want to remind everybody that we are not in a position where we can afford to go and enhance, improve and optimize everything just because a certain group of businessmen or a small group of pedestrian proponents want their particular thing done. We're in a situation where we have a horrendous debt to deal with, where we have been given indications that the dividends that we used to get from council companies are no longer going to be coming, where we've got enormous infrastructure deferred maintenance to deal with. And much as I love the idea of improving and optimizing, developing various things like the Optigan, they aren't a problem, Karen, they work well. And we have real problems that we have to deal with and grapple with. To be spending anything on this kind of development, on this kind of research and on trialling, to me, is to imagine that all the other real issues just don't count anymore. And that's what really worries me. I'm also concerned that the concept of a trial is not necessarily as much of a trial as it may appear. I note that in George Street, it was quite some number of years ago, we had a trial of restricting turning, every second intersection, you could only turn one way, which one of our transport people came up with as an idea in their lunchtime, they decided to trial it. Well, it was trialled all right and people kicked up about it at the time. And I still find it actually a considerable pain when I'm trying to get somewhere around George Street and I have to go around three blocks when I used to be able to turn anywhere I like. But that trial just is still a trial, I suppose, after how many years now it's just become a reality. So we've got to be very careful that if we're considering any trial, that actually it is a trial, it has a start date and it has a finish date and that at the finish date, certain criteria can be looked at. And to do all of this, we need money and we don't have it. For that reason alone, I don't believe it's responsible for any of us to be voting for this recommendation.
Thank you councillor, councillor Z.
Yeah, I actually think this recommendation is quite aggressive. What it says is that it is going to be a trial and I'm against that. I think that's wrong, it's a wrong approach. I think that, and I have got a recommendation that I will foreshadow because this won't fail, but there should be consultation before we have any trial whatsoever. So the recommendation should, and I'll read out the recommendation, that the committee approve the process and timeframe of development of options for the benefit of informed consultation on a possible trial of pedestrianisation of the Lower Optigan and Lower Stewart Street. Now, I think it's really important that we do consult with people before we say, yes, it's going to be a trial. This recommendation is too tough, it says we're going to have one, whether you're likely to not. Yes, it does. And I think that you're dealing with people's lives here. It doesn't matter so much for those in the Lower Optigan, we've got mostly bar holders or homeless, but in the Lower Stewart Street, we've got a lot of retailers, their lifestyle could be picked quite dramatically with any sort of trial whatsoever. In fact, some businesses may not even survive a trial. So I think we've got to be very careful, if we're going to go into, have any trial whatsoever, it must be fled and it must be in a way that there is proper consultation before we have to. Because I believe that if you have consultation with certainly some of the people that I've been talking to, there won't be any trial whatsoever if you listen to what they're saying and I'm talking about substantial retailers in the area. If you go back to the trial that we had, or proposed trial that we had in 2010, which is not that long ago, there were, in the Lower Optigan, there was one person in favour of closing off the Lower Optigan and in Lower Stewart Street, there was one in favour, one, two people were in favour of it. And that trial was called off and it was called off for various reasons, because nobody wanted it. So I think we've got to be very careful about what we do with regards to this issue. And I, I don't know, I've just given my resolution to the pan, but I'm urging councillors to support my basic recommendation, which is for informed consultation on a possible trial. So that's saying it may happen and it depends on what sort of information we get back from our consultation. Otherwise, as I say, this recommendation here now is saying there is going to be a trial. And I think that's wrong.
Well, councillor, I need to draw your attention to page six three. And the table in the bottom, in the final fourth box at the bottom, clarification by at the time that any decision on trial or what the trial was is listed. So your statement is factually incorrect, I'm sorry.
Well, I refuse.
Sorry, you've spoken and that's the fact that I want to draw your attention. councillor Law.
Recommendation says otherwise, Mr Chairman, the best recommendation says that there's going to be a trial.
Well, councillor, you must take it careful because it's not what's in the report. councillor Law.
Yeah, look, in principle, I'm not against trialling something like this. I do think that a trial in my opinion does not mean that it will automatically, if it's a success, go through. I do have some concerns that people in a particular area must have a risk. And I believe through the consultation process, we can get that. But I think to give up a trial because consultation, they need to know it's a way to light this out in councillor Thompson's Christmas dinner because it hasn't been tried. And so I, in principle, support, I support a trial. But I would also be firm enough to say that although I might support a trial, it may be that at a later date a permanent closure or repeated trials may not be supported by me. But I'm happy to support a trial.
Thank you councillor Calvert.
I've been made more, a little more enthusiastic about the thought of actually consulting on that on the basis that on top of the wider sort of look at it. My feeling is that to do this thing and the central city, other piece of work we're doing separately is beyond doubt. I think we should look at the two together. If we're looking at the two of these in parallel and we have a central city proposal by the time we look at whether this is halfway a useful response to the whole thing, then it may work, but we need to look at the whole thing in and around or in the Optigan, depending on which way you look at it. The, it may be, for instance, what comes out of other central city work we're doing, that another place might be more of their suitable for pedestrianisation, not this area. And I would like to remain open to other options that might want to enhance the whole, that whole central city area, not choose this particular one and focus on it. So the only reason I will give this any support at this stage would be because I'm expecting this other work to be happening at the same time. And if it hasn't happened and it isn't coming up with an overall suggestion of a whole position, then I would be really against going into this particular corner about a whole thing being updated.
councillor Watson.
I agree with this, I do however agree to an extent with councillor Z. And I'm just wondering if the mover and seconder through, Mr Chairman, are prepared to add in the words after the timeframe in the report, which clearly clarifies it through that timeframe that you yourself referred to, Mr Chairman? Because I think that ties in that whole idea that we'll make a decision in January whether we're going to trial, so.
Happy, who was the seconder? councillor Thompson. Oh, councillor Thompson, sorry. You happy with that?
Yes.
That's fine. So I mean, it's in the report in the first line of the recommendation.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, having dealt with that, it's just, I'm happy.
councillor Pete.
Thank you, I support the amendment and the thrust of this anyway. Because 20 years ago, I promoted a trial heading the Dunedin Environmental Business Network. It didn't come off because we did our own consultation and found that there was a resistance from one retailer in particular who ran a gun shop. The point, so the trial was kind of gunned down at that point. What this leads to is, my main point is that the character, the retail character of this area has changed dramatically since that time 20 years ago. And it is more now, I think, appropriate to be considering this. So we've got one toe in the water, we're going to go have two in a minute if this is passed. And that the social sort of vibrancy that can result from something like this would really enhance our central city. really enhance our central city fabric, I think. So as you know, it's supposed to be hospitality that is being offered there now in this area, so I'll be supporting it.
Councillor Stone. I'll be supporting this resolution, but I'm especially seeing now this link tightly to the process. I think we have to, we have to start to look at how we make our central city, and particularly around the Othigan and probably down the Main Street, a place where people want to go. And want to go there because it's a nice experience to see there, it's a people place. And I think that's going to be extremely important for our retailers. Those of you who keep an eye on what's happening in retailing will be clearly aware that the number of online purchases is climbing rapidly, over twenty-five percent of purchases made now are online, that people are not walking into a shop. So while currently, while currently our retailers have some fear of pedestrianising areas of the retail district, in fact, it might be their saving. And there does need to be some serious work done, and this is a good start, to understand what the implications are and what effect it does have. Because my view is that we will have to do some serious work around our main retail district, if those retailers are going to have a bright future. And it is time for the retailers themselves to start thinking about what is the new digital world and the ability to buy online going to do to the everyday shopper? And do they need to be in an environment where people go to be entertained, if you like, with that retailing around them, where they can go and try things and buy things? Or whether we lose that to the fact that someone has a warehouse, taking orders online, electronically, shipping them, and receiving them back? So even in clothing, you can now, you can order clothing online, it will be delivered with a return box, you try it on, if you don't like it, it doesn't fit, put it back in the box, send it back. So we need to be aware of these things, and we need to raise that with our retailers. But this whole idea of making our central city a people place, i.e. people go there, there's a better chance for the retailers to engage with those people, I think this is a piece of work that we have to do.
Councillor Wood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm pleased that councillor Staines raised those economic development points, because I think they are valid. The international evidence has told us that better pedestrian and cycle-friendly spaces are in fact good for retail, I don't think there are any businesses in downtown right now that couldn't, that couldn't use that kind of support. As he goes, I am seeing this kind of work proceed, I am aware that we do need to have this conversation with our community, because our city centre is by its very nature a contested space. It doesn't belong to building owners, it doesn't belong to businesses, it doesn't belong to their patrons or their retailers or council, it belongs to everybody, and everybody collectively has to be involved in that decision. And while potentially we get far more productive and qualitative consultation after a trial has excluded, I don't think that it is important to have those conversations before we begin. I don't think there'd be many people in this room today that wouldn't agree that the transformation that is going on currently in a warehouse precinct, which has involved financial contributions from this council, to leverage far greater input financially from the private sector, council contributions that I will remind councillor Van de Wiss, he was an ardent supporter of increasing substantially for the 2014-15 year, in the spirit of his austerity measures that we're steering down the barrel of.
No need to remind, since that was obviously going to be a game there.
You've spoken, put your mind far away.
I just thought I would bring that to the councillors' attention. So I think it's time we get on with it frankly, and I support this wholeheartedly.
Councillor Thompson.
Look, I support it as well, but I have, there are some warning signs for me which concern me. I think that, and I suppose I'm speaking as a retailer as much as a councillor at this point in time, but with both hats on, I would entirely endorse what Aaron just said, that this is a public space that we're talking about. It's not, it's not a space that's owned by a particular tenant at a particular point in time, and our decisions have to be much wider than that. But I think you need to look at what is happening, what, the retail specialists, the people who plan retail, those places that we all profess to hate, but which everybody shops at, are shopping malls. And within those, you see the science of how retail planners think in terms of consumer response. You don't put fashion for the over-sixties in between lippy and glasses. You don't put the men's shoe shop in between Ben Don and whatever. The, what you do is, you plan retail precincts, you look to put things together in ways that will be attracted to the particular segment that they want to be attracted to. And we need to think about Main Street retail in exactly the same way if we want it to be successful. In my own business, I would, I will always try in the malls I'm in to be beside my competitors if I possibly can, because I know that collectively, we're going to poll a wider group of people than each of us is going to poll if we are in different parts of the mall. And if you look, as somebody else has already said, if you look at that particular part of town, you already have a developing precinct. And it is a precinct that you can enhance the vitality of. And as you do that, you will undoubtedly benefit some people who are there now, and you will disadvantage some people who are there now. And that is the ever-changing nature of retail, that happens all the time, and it can't be a reason why we don't make wider decisions. Now, I don't, I'm not saying you don't take into consideration clearly the views of people who are there, but you have to take in a much wider position than that, and I would really encourage that we do that. So if one or two people feel very strongly that we shouldn't do this, they may have some very good reasons why we shouldn't do it, and we should listen to those, but the fact that they have those reasons is not the reason itself. And the last, the second point I would make is, if you want to have a retail precinct that is successful, you don't do it half-assed. And my big worry with this is that when we talk about a trial, what we'll be talking about is some orange cones stuck across three bits and a couple of plant boxes stuck in there. And that is just not a trial. So if in this process, we establish that to do a proper trial involves more money than we actually have, then we bloody well shouldn't do it, we should wait until we've got the money to do a proper trial.
Thank you, councillor, councillor Wyver.
Thank you, Chair. Quite happy to follow up the councillor Thompson's comments, because a lot of them I share as well. The biggest issue that I see is that, to me, this is just a slice of cake, we really wanted to look at what the full cake looks like. Because we're really trying to talk about, you know, what's the potential of closing this section of George Street down or other areas, because I've heard those comments made around different tables, I will put councillors. And so we isolate one piece and say, okay, we're going to close this piece off. We've already heard from Dr. Hazelton that that can have ramifications up to three blocks away. So rather than just climbing into this one issue or this one slice of cake, why aren't we taking a step back and say, what's the big piece of cake look like? How's it going to factor in? We're going to have cycleways here soon, you know, that's going to have an application again. And I'm really getting, when we start getting isolated on these little pockets, and saying do this, even in the discussion we had at the annual plan when this topic came up, all of a sudden, this block over here we could do the same with, or we could do a block over here, the ramifications just multiply dramatically. So I'd like to see us take a step back, similar to what councillor Thompson's just said, and let's look at the whole cake rather than just a slice.
Thank you, councillor McTavish.
Thank you, and in the context of discussing the process and timeframe, because I think that's what this report is focused on, I think that there are a whole range of issues that have been raised around the table, and I think that those will be teased out during the process which staff have outlined in the process and timeline, and the range of staff involved, and the range of issues that are flagged on page six point two, I think, gives some feeling for that. So I don't get concerned that those issues will be covered. But for me, I think that councillor Thompson also flagged that the point that I want to touch on it, and that is the funding, the matter of funding. For me, it is the biggest, the big missing in the process and timeline. I understand the manager's concerns about not having capacity or expertise within, personally I think the team would more than capable of the expertise required to do it, but I appreciate that it's an area that the staff involved haven't strayed into in a big way before. But I don't think there's a reason for not looking at it, and I think there are going to be a range of staff involved in this project over the next couple of months. I think that there is real merit in pursuing some community-based funding for this particular project. I think it's a sitting duck to be a project that we kick off, that sort of approach with, for the reason that councillor Thompson articulated, and that is that we will have a number of aspects that we will wish to fund. They will be priceable, they will be identifiable, they will be something that we can say will be a physical manifestation of someone's funding, and something that people could really use to buy into this project, and to have community ownership of this project. We are doing, we are trying to fast-track this project, which is why I think, sorry, fast-track the investigation of this project. And as such, I think there should be, and there will be, community understanding of the fact that, given our fiscal situation, there may be a need for them to step up if they wish to see this happen outside of the usual LTP or annual plan timeframes. So given all of that, and given the fact that we may come December, or January, depending on how much magic we can work with the timeframe, given that we may sit here in December and say this is a good idea and we want to progress with it, but we can't because we don't have the money, I think that would be a real shame, and I think it would be a real shame if we hadn't investigated community funding now, in order to avoid us having to make that decision then. So I would like to see us look into it, and I would commend it to be considered, as we did back in May, commend it to ELT and to the management team to consider how we might investigate that over the coming months.
Can I just suggest that be added, as an additional recommendation, that staff investigate funding, funding opportunities, not necessarily for P and E, sorry, for Anna's team, but that has been progressed in parallel and reported back in October?
Look, I, to be honest, I don't feel that we have the staff time to investigate funding. If we, if it's another department, that's fine, if it's clear that it's another department, because otherwise I think I'd have to let the report lie and ask, and actually cost, I'd have to cost and risk our time to do that.
We've got a clear suggestion from the manager, she's not suggesting that it's your budget we're talking about, she doesn't need, we don't need an amendment to this affair, you can do it and come back to us about it, it's quite clear, you've already got the mandate.
Suggesting that it comes back to councillors and not.
It was in the original, it was in the original recommendation that councillor McTavish has referred to, so you can bring it back to us in due course, so we don't need it on the oral paper now, that's enough. I just, before the write-up reply, I wanted to make some brief comments, brief in respect to councillor Wilson's next meeting. I think, I think this is a very conservative report, and cautious, as I said earlier, I think it's entirely appropriate. It is clear from the report and the conversation, it does not commit councillor to anything, much and all, as I personally hope, as did the submitters that have got us to this point with the annual plan submission, that there may be something we can do at low minimal cost, or minimal cost, however funded, to further enhance our urban core. Like councillor Staines, I think that developments of this kind are absolutely fundamental to the nature of the city. The city used to be a leader in urban design, that's why we've got one of the best collection of heritage buildings which we are honouring and supporting in the country. And that's what a lot of visitors to the city come and look at, but it's not just about visitors. The most important people in this town are Dunedin residents, and they are not just retailers. And I think the comments made by councillor Thompson and councillor Staines are really important here, because this is about the public of the city and important open public spaces, just as our main shopping streets are, and they remain core to the vitality of the city. And thank God, we even prior to the earthquake, didn't have the destruction of the core of the city that Christchurch experienced before it all fell over. We are vulnerable to that sort of change because of planning and retail breakout, and we have managed to maintain one of the most vibrant shopping cores and retail cores of any city in this country. We used to lead, for some years, it's been my view, that this council and previous councils, sorry, not this council, previous councils somewhat lost their way, but perhaps it would be charitable to say that they were otherwise focused on some large issues. But we really do need to lift our act in terms of the appearance of the central city and its vitality, some of that discussion I hope I'll be talking about in the next meeting, and I think further development of this kind suggested by this paper is essential. To those who argue, let's look at the big picture, well, actually, the big picture is being looked at, and that's been explained, there's a lot of work going on around the tertiary precinct, about how we can make the crossings of those highways much safer, there are some exciting, really exciting proposals about how we can further enhance the campus area, and I'm sure retailers are the very people who are going to benefit most actually from those sorts of things. To argue, hang on, let's look at the big cake, means that no cake gets eaten anywhere. And in fact, given the resource constraints we've been talking about today, and the complexity and potential acrimony of these sorts of debates, how on earth could we manage the whole city in one go? I certainly wouldn't like to be chairing that meeting. So I'm very supportive of what I believe is, and most people who read papers will believe is a cautious development, and will certainly be supporting this, and other proposals when people come up with them to investigate what can be done elsewhere. Mia Calvert.
Thank you, Chair. The advantages and reasons for doing this have been pretty well canned, so I'll just refer a bit to the process and its risks. There's been concern expressed about the trial's effects, but I think that concern is misplaced until we know the shape of the trial. And I'm also concerned about phrases like closing it off or whatever. We don't know what form pedestrianisation in the very widest sense might even mean, it might be shared space, there may be cars still moving through the area. We, so I think we're predetermining it and prejudging it, if we get all, get our, that is a twist about what the effects are going to be when we don't know what it is. The shape of the trial will be, will be, will depend on consultation, and if you look in the timeframe matrix box, it's got a line, consultation. So all of those concerns will be addressed in the process of developing the shape of the trial, and then the decision will be made in January.
Thank you, I'll put the motion, it is in front of you. I've asked for a division on this piece, so Miss Jordan, would you call the councillors' names please?
It's in front of us as well.
Sorry?
As well.
With the addition of the words in the report here.
Can we see it up here?
Oh, well. Can you just read it?
I just want to put my face on something.
He's putting it up. The addition of the words in the report as, as agreed by the move in sector some time ago. All right, would you call the division please?
Councillor Z.
No.
Councillor Calvert.
Yes.
Councillor Wood.
Yes.
Councillor Hawke.
No.
Councillor Hawkins.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Yes.
Councillor McTavish.
Aye.
Councillor Moon.
Aye.
Councillor Pete.
Aye.
Councillor Staines.
Aye.
Councillor Thompson.
Aye.
Councillor Vandevus.
No.
Councillor Wiley.
No.
Councillor Wilson.
Aye.
Mia Calvert.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
carried 11-4. Thank you very much. That takes us to the final item on the agenda, the notification of issues for consideration by the Chair. Are there any, councillor McTavish has something.
Did you get mine nearly out, or shall I repeat it? That is that you guys consider whether or not we should be making direct approach to government to highlight the lack of guidance and support on matters pertaining to climate change adaptation and the potential costs and issues that we are facing, or the magnitude of the potential costs and issues we are facing.
Noted. The manager is writing. Thank you. Any further? Thank you. I would be clear to meeting close.